Call this meeting to order. This is the opening round of the Holyoke City Council Budget Hearings. The Clerk, or the President, will call the roll. Who's here?
Hang on.
I got a sheet here.
You good, Joe?
Counselor?
No, I have one.
I got a sheet.
I have one. I have faith in my friend.
Thanks, Juan.
Hey, Juan, can't wait to see you in council chambers.
Oh, me too. I have something to... Anyways, I don't want to say...
I know, I know, I'm just messing with you.
My apologies. The roll call, Counselor Anderson Burgos.
I am definitely here.
Counselor Bartley. Counselor Givner.
Here.
Counselor Jordan will be here shortly. Counselor Malzana Velez. Counselor McGee. Counselor McGee got called away out of state on business. He sends his apologies and wishes us the best of luck. Counselor McGivern is present. Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
Here.
Counselor Paolo. Counselor Izzy Rivera.
Here.
Counselor Jenny Rivera. Counselor Tomlin.
Here.
And Counselor Bacon.
Here.
I'll rise for a pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America. I love Zoom, but hybrids gotta go. A little delay. With our President not being with us, our rules state that the senior member opens up the meeting. That is so done. As I stated, this is the opening round of the budget hearings for the city council for fiscal year 23. The wishes of the council as to who you wish to run the meeting this evening.
I would like to nominate Counselor McGivern as a senior member to run the meeting.
Second.
Motion made second to allow Counselor McGivern to run the meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Typical format, I highly suggest over our... We're into our 45-day period with the budget. During that 45-day period, we are allowed to make line item cuts. It's the only time where we can make not only a line item cut, but a portion of a line item smaller than the actual line item itself. During that 45-day period, we can end the budget process at any time by voting on the budget. We can reduce the proposed budget that's in front of us. We can just let the budget sit the way it's in front of us, and on the 46th day, it will become law, minus any cuts that we make. President McGee, and I think the format we've used over most recent years is the best, that during the initial budget hearings, we do not make motions to cut, but we save it for when President McGee initiates the final budget hearing, and on that evening, we can go through the budget and make any cuts so wished by the council. If everybody's in agreement with that, the second part of our agenda, or I'm sorry, the first part of our agenda is traditionally, we had a wonderful State of the Union, State of the City address by Mayor Garcia last week, when he gave us the budget, which also started the 45-day period. He highlighted a lot of things. The first thing we're going to do is take our recap sheets, invite our auditor. We also have a CPA, I believe, to our administrative assistant on Zoom, and we're going to go over the revenue, which supports, revenue projections, which support this budget. I know Tanya is going to make a brief, most of us are familiar with this, but if you have any questions about what a recap sheet is and what the revenue is, now's a good time to ask them. Once we feel comfortable with what the revenue projections are, the mayor is part of the revenue projections, our auditor, and Mr. Mayor, who is the CPA again? I'm sorry.
Andrew, she's not online yet.
Okay. She'll be joining us shortly. Any questions before we start with the recap sheet? With that, Tanya, it's all yours.
I almost forgot how to turn that on. I haven't been in here in so long. Can you hear me?
Welcome back.
So, the tax recap form fiscal year 2023, you should all have it in front of you, currently shows a surplus of $1.1 million. I'm telling you that because we also had one that showed 723, but we did 723,000. But we did have a new cherry sheet estimate come in from the Senate, so that's the change that you're going to see from the one that was presented last Thursday to today. I think I would like to start on the last page of the recap. So, when you get to the front page, we'll have gone through all of the detail. The very last page of the recap is actually your budget figures. You can see that you have the department requests in column number B at 70,000. Then you have your schools at, yeah, 70 million, I'm sorry, 70 million. 83 million for the schools, where a total of 153 million that you see in your budget forecast. But also included in the back of this sheet is your sewer enterprise fund at 8.9 million, your CPA, which is in your column D, at 783,000. And the total appropriations altogether are 163,591,606. So if you go to the third page, you'll be viewing your local receipts. I know that there's some new people here, but the receipts that are local are considered like your motor vehicle excise, room occupancy, boat excise, your penalty and interest on taxes, departmental revenues, you have your cannabis excise in there now, so it's revenues like that that are coming locally into the city. The second page is more information from the state. It's taken stuff from these other two pages and putting it in this one form. So your total amount to be raised is $163 million. You can see some cherry sheet offsets for, they're for like the library and school choice receiving. We have no other fund deficits in there right now because we're working on those special revenue funds, trying to clear them up, which is really good. And then you have your state and county cherry sheet charges. And then at the bottom of the sheet is your receipts. So all of your revenues you're bringing in, you'll see your state revenue, your local revenue. We don't have any other sources of revenue coming in, so the next couple of sections are zero. And then you have your total of all estimated receipts and revenue. And then at the end, you see your summary of your total amount to be raised in total receipts. So that total is the 186,38,955. So when you take all of that information and you look at the first sheet, it's all transferred over to the first sheet, but what you have on here is you have your total amount raised, which you just saw, the 186 million. And then you have your receipts, your estimated receipts and other revenue sources. And then you have your tax levy, which is a culmination of your fiscal year 2022 tax recap. If you go down into the bottom square, you can see your base of the 59 million, your adjusted new growth that we don't have for fiscal year 2022 yet, your Proposition Two and a Half, which is the 2.5, so that is a total of 1.5 million. And then you see your levy limit plus exclusions at 61,409,542. We did put a minimal growth of $500,000, which I did receive from the assessor. And then H is your 2023 levy limit plus exclusions in growth. So that all together, you take a look at your limit, your levy limit, which is 61,909,542, and you have a ceiling of 61,185,752. You need to take the lower. Whatever is the lower, the ceiling of the limit, you're going to use that to forecast your tax. So here, we use the 61,185,752. And then we have the levy that we needed from all the calculations we just looked at, which is 60,73825. And then we ended up with a $1,111,927 surplus. Any questions?
Thank you, Madam Auditor. Not a question, but something I may should have stated first, but Tanya, this is a little bit of a moving target, as always, because, one, the state legislature and the governor, although they should have by now passed the next year's budget, have not. And are we using, and I know you just stated, but which estimate are we using on the state level for our revenue from the state?
Well, we just received the new Senate cherry sheet estimate, so there's one more to go, which is, I can't even remember the last one. The government, the, I don't know, but there's one more appropriation to be made by the state.
And irregardless, come July 1, our budget becomes law based on what we know in terms of estimated revenue. Even local revenue can be estimated and could come in higher or lower. I trust some of the local revenue here is conservative and will come in higher, but we'll leave that up to the tax collector and the treasurer to make sure we get all that money, you know? And they're all...
Absolutely. It's super conservative, actually.
It is. And the final, if I'm saying it correctly, Tanya, the final recap sheet is actually later in the year when we set the final tax rate, which traditionally is, you know, sometime, you know, before the end of the second quarter to start the third quarter. And I trust some year, I know you and I have talked, we'll be setting the final tax rate to start the second quarter, which would be very nice, but we're still a little bit off from that being a reality.
We're working towards that.
I know you are. I know you are. I know you all are, and we welcome that. Mayor, would you like to come in and join us? Because I didn't mean to keep you out in the audience. And all department heads are welcome to, you know, if you're comfortable, stay there, and we're bringing you into the hot seat when your budget is up, but if you'd like to come in anytime, you're welcome to. Zoom opens up a few seats here. We've been joined by Counselor Jenny Rivera. Online also is our city treasurer, Katie Jakowski. The roll call got everybody else, but I think that's it online. The law department is here. Thank you, Michael Pistonett, for joining us and looking forward. Before we head to our mayor, are there any questions for the auditor? Joe? Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah. Thank you, Tanya. And thank you for that explanation of the sheet, and sometimes it still is difficult in doing it for a number of years to try to figure all this out, because it is a moving target. On page three, you mentioned the estimated receipts for fiscal 2023. Number 22 is, could you explain what that one is, the 1.2 million non-recurring? Is that cannabis?
No. So that what that is going to be is the revenue replacement of lost revenue that we get to do through ARPA. Remember last year was like 1.7 million?
Okay.
So that's an estimate on my part. I'm in the middle of doing the calculation right now.
Okay, okay. Appreciate that. So that's the ARPA, that's where we offset it last year with that money?
Yes, yep.
There's a 1 point. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Counselor McGivern?
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. Just a quick question, Tanya, if you know, how does the levy for this year compare to last year? I just don't have last year's in front of me.
I actually don't either, Linda, but I can definitely send that to you if you like.
Okay, sure. Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Is it safe to say the option is up 2.5% from last year?
And growth.
And growth. Okay. We've had a couple of years where we weren't going up because we were hitting the ceiling, but we've gotten ourselves away from the ceiling because of new growth over the last couple of years.
Right.
I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I think that was part of Counselor Bacon's question.
Yes, that's true. I don't have an exact figure, but yes.
Thank you. I think we'd all like to see that if you could, when you have it. Any other questions at the moment? Mayor, your budget is based on a lot of what our auditor just said, and I know you have other people working with you, which we commend you, and we thank you for the timeliness of putting this budget in front of us. Before we head into specific questions about any, but your budget, but any line item in the budget, particularly to your office and particularly to the pages that you control, is there any comments you'd like to make about revenue and revenue projections that you feel comfortable with in terms of basing this budget on that?
Yep, just to compliment your comment around the budget being a moving target, it is a moving target, and every day that passes, we learn new things about our revenue potential. And I feel good about, there is a peace of mind to know that we are moving forward conservatively with our estimates on the revenue receipts, and to also take it a step further and put forward a conservative budget as well that doesn't necessarily eat up all our excess capacity that's currently on the table, which is the 1.1 million. And we're always learning new things. The day that I presented the State of the City was the very same day when our cherry sheets got updated and we learned we had 300,000 extra, which brings it up to the 1.1 million that Tanya presented, which, you know, again, there's a peace of mind to know that that's there in case we need it. I know in this budget, although it's my, it's our first go-around between now and the 45 days, there will be supplemental versions just to tie up some loose ends in areas where I might have cut a little bit too much. But nevertheless, what I'm happy to share with you as you go forward in this process is that this budget, there's no service reductions, and in some areas, we're looking forward to even restore positions that have been cut in the past, necessary pivots that I think the counselors have done in the past to be sure that we're protecting the rate for taxpayers and doing your best to keep up with services. In other areas, we're building up, but this year, one priority, well, you can call it year one or year zero, it's only been about six months I've been into the position, has been specifically to focus in those roles that are, we're calling them gaps, so those positions specifically where there's turnovers and it's interrupting services one way or another, to be sure that, you know, we're maintaining our competitiveness and not losing professional employees to other communities so that there isn't the gaps, you know, any gaps in those turnovers. But, you know, I've outlined in the budget narrative some points, some bullet points of what you can see different in this budget that merits discussion as you go forward, meeting with departments, but to know that there is, again, enough capacity on the table. I'm looking forward to see, I know you guys have only the power to cut, but certainly there's flexibility in our end if you feel strongly about something you want to see restored. I'd be more than happy to have that discussion too, to be sure that, again, that we're agreeing to a budget that maintains our community priorities in each of the different neighborhoods that we all represent. So I'm looking forward to answer these questions and do what we can to try to get us into the new fiscal year.
Mayor, thank you. And if I could just say personally, this is a, to many of us who have been around, this is a little bit of a change in terms of the budget process itself, but it's, to myself, it's welcomed. It's transparency at its best. As you stated, we can cut a line item during this 45-day period. We can never add to a line item. We can never initiate an appropriation anytime during the year. However, given the opportunity after listening to the department heads and being able to make some recommendations to you with the time where you could supplement the budget now or before we set the tax rate is much appreciated. And I hope as we go through the process, and I think most of the veteran counselors will agree with me, and by the time we finish our budget hearings, all the counselors will be on the same page to know, you know, the budget we have supports the services that this city provides, and that ultimately is our goal. And you can only do it when those revenue projections stay where, you know, stay true. And that's a tough job. And I don't like to be critical of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the money that comes back from Boston, and a lot of it is our own money, you know, headed towards Boston, that comes back to support our goal to provide services. Their budget should have been finalized before May 1, and that's by their own Mass General Law Finance Law. There are times when they don't finalize their budget to sometime in the fall, and it leaves us scrambling almost halfway through the year. But I'm getting off on an editorial. I didn't mean to do that. This is a line item. Look, I thank you. Does everybody feel comfortable with the revenue projections and where we stand at the moment where we can go into the mayor's budget?
I feel comfortable.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson Burgos. And I do have a laptop in front of me. I can see hands, or I can listen to anybody who's on Zoom if you do wish to speak, just either way is fine tonight. Mayor, we have been joined by Andrea... What's her last name?
Andrea, I apologize.
Andrea Charcason, hi.
Thank you. I apologize. The mayor and I both apologize. We just went through with the city auditor, with the mayor, talked about the recap sheet, some revenues. I'm not sure if the mayor or you want to make some comments at the moment?
Andrea, how you doing? Welcome. Thanks for jumping on.
Good. Sorry for the delay. I was having some system issues.
No worries. Tanya did an incredible job going over the revenue projections. I think where you can be helpful here, and I know you can do a screen share if you're able, to kind of go over how these projections compare to previous fiscal years and what the percentage increase in the tax levy, the tax levy is.
Certainly. Let's see now, since we have a shared, and I think it will let me share, let me give this a try here.
Andrea, as you're doing that, can you just, we have your name, can you just tell us your profession?
Sure. Oops, it's tight. Sure. My name is Andrea Charcason. I currently work with Eric Kinsher CPA firm. We're located in Sagamore Beach, Massachusetts. Prior to joining Eric approximately a year and a half ago, I worked for about 16 years in municipal government. So my background is working as a finance director, as well as a treasurer-collector, and also doing a lot of town accountant auditor work for two municipalities during my career in local government, and then have worked for a number of other communities as, now as a consultant. So a couple weeks ago, Josh had asked us to take a look at how your budget was shaping up, and we've put together your consolidated view in a format that we use to tie out your budget to the tax recap, which we find is a very helpful thing, so that you're not dealing with multiple workbooks and different views. And then, once you get through this budget cycle, we'd be able to take this information and perhaps work with you, if you'd like, on a five-year forecast in the future. But for the time being, we have focused on your fiscal '23 budget. So we pulled together a workbook. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, we're good. We're good, and we're good on Zoom.
Okay, super. All righty. So what we've done is we've taken the information from your department heads, which have then moved on to the mayor's level of budget. And rather than just pull together things for the new fiscal year, fiscal '23, we have provided staff some historical information as well to help with particularly your different revenues that are out there. So we've also taken and we've created for the finance committee and others, not only a consolidated view of expenses for fiscal '23, but we've also added the same information here for the prior year so that people could take a look at some different metrics, data points from year to year. But since all that information was flowing through from the department heads in terms of expenses, we wanted to then focus our efforts on revenues. So our first tab, the summary table, looks very much what you'd find on your tax recap each year. And again, this is just summarizing your revenues up top against your consolidated expenditures below. So what we've done is we've broken out your different revenue sources into a few key areas. And the first thing we'll take a quick look at would be your local receipts. So there are a number of local receipts, and for people that follow the tax recap, you would find your estimated local receipts on page three of the tax recap. So we wanted to take a look and provided a couple years of history as we were going through and trying to shore up what we felt would be the local receipt estimates for fiscal 2023. And so we've provided that information here as a separate tab. State aid, as some folks may be aware, the state aid budget has gotten through to the Senate Ways and Means, so we have updated the state aid information using that current budget. And I believe that came out last Thursday, which, it actually came out right before you had your first meeting. So we went ahead and we updated the state aid to match what the state is projecting at the moment. And what we found was that although state aid is going up quite a bit, the majority of that has to do with education. And so when we look at the larger increase year to year for what the schools have submitted, it is right in line with the increases in that state aid. So Chapter 70 is a very large number for Holyoke. And then there's some other offsets and amounts related to tuition reimbursement, special ed, and school choice. So we see that your state aid... Oh, yep, I'm sorry, go ahead. Oh, nope. So the state aid is projected to go up net of your state assessments or your charges by the figure that you see down below. So there's going to be a net increase estimated of $7.2 million. And again, that roughly estimates what the schools have submitted for a larger-than-average increase for the next year as well. So although the school budget is one of the larger pieces that are going up, that is being covered by your additional state aid. So without looking at any other available funds, for example, if you were to look to use some free cash, maybe to spend on some capital projects and things of that nature, right now, we're just looking at what our sort of usual receipts are going to be. And so if we look at our tax levy, which is perhaps, you know, the biggest piece or the, you know, what we want to focus on first and foremost, we have some history here as well. So you can see in terms of the overall tax levy, going back to fiscal '20... So you can see in terms of the overall tax levy, um, going back to fiscal 20, um, that increase was 2.94%. Fiscal 21 went up, um, 2.55% for the tax levy, levy, excuse me. And then this year for fiscal 2022, um, you have one of the larger increases that you've had over the last, I would say, half a dozen years. And there's certainly a lot of reasons for that, right? With us, um, trying to, you know, get through, um, COVID and get back to sort of pre-COVID, um, levels for services and things like that. It's not surprising that the, um, tax levy did have to go up more than, um, what it has in the last few years percentage-wise. Um, so the, the good news is that as we looked at what, um, the department heads had submitted for expenses and compared that to, um, uh, the sort of the later increases in state aid that have been projected, um, we are estimating in order to cover the budget that's been submitted at the mayor's level, we are projecting that you would need a 1.84% increase in the tax levy. Um, which is, um, quite good, um, compared to, you know, what's happening elsewhere in the state, um, and in terms of, um, what folks are trying to do to, to get back to, um, sort of pre-COVID programs and level of services. So the increase, the projected increase of 1.84% um, amounts to, um, a little over $1 million increase in the tax levy. So our current tax levy is, um, $58.9 million for the current year. And so we are looking to add a little over a million, about $1.1 million to the current, um, taxes that are being, uh, levied and collected for this year. Um, and of course, you know, as your budget, um, budget levels come in, there's, um, different increases and, and changes that are made. And so what we've done for, um, for the staff was we've provided, um, different links and, and formulas to all of these other pages so that if, um, you know, the, the FinCom in particular would like to, um, try some things out, changes in the, the, the increase in the levy and that sort of thing, um, we can, we can easily make those changes in real time, um, rather than coming back to you at a later date and, and crunching the numbers. So with respect to the tax levy in particular, we've, uh, provided a little table down below here to give you an idea and, and others to see, you know, what we're talking about in terms of, um, percentage increases. So the way things are laid out with Holyoke's, um, tax levy right now, um, 1% increase is equivalent to about $560,000. Um, there's also a new tool that's available on the Divisional Local Services website, um, that will allow us to take this information in terms of the tax levy increase and further break that out with an estimate for the residential taxpayers in Holyoke versus the commercial and personal property taxpayers. Um, so in our meeting last week, um, um, you know, there, it was, you know, asked whether or not we could, we could provide that, um, that further level of detail. And so we, we certainly have that available. Um, and that's something that, you know, everyone has access to online and we will provide the links, um, to the finance committee. Um, you know, if there's, if there's some of that, um, uh, greater detail, um, that people would be interested in. As you do have a, a, um, shift, you have a, um, a split tax rate. And, um, so it does impact your residential taxpayers a little bit differently than what we're looking at for the overall, um, increase to the tax levy. Um, so if anybody, you know, is interested in that, we could take a look at what their average, uh, excuse me, what their home value is now and use that as an estimate to, to calculate what the, what the likely increase would be, um, to each person's tax bill for the new year. Excuse me. Um, so we, we have things laid out, um, for the FinCom. Um, again, you know, obviously, you know, if, um, if, uh, Tanya and Josh would like our help as well, um, you know, during your different meetings to kind of, um, uh, work with the group to, to try some different numbers, um, drop things in, I'm glad to do that as well. Um, we have in terms of the expense tab here, we've provided, um, another column so that as the, um, council starts to propose, um, their cuts, we will drop those numbers in here and you'll be able to see, um, what the council cuts are, um, at all these different, uh, departments, um, similar to what we're seeing here in the mayor's cuts column. Right now, just to have everything flow through, um, we have the mayor's budget, um, equal to the council appropriation budget. And have also looked at, um, I think, um, and I apologize for, for joining the meeting late, um, if, you know, um, Tanya hadn't mentioned what were the main increases in the budget, happy to go over that as well. Um, and we've, we have that highlighted in the, um, workbook, um, for anybody that's looking to, um, see what's happening from, from year to year. Does anybody have any questions relating to, um, the workbook, um, how it, how it's pulled together, um, or, um, anything specifically having to do with, um, the tax levy, how that's perhaps calculating? Um, state aid, as I said, is, is something that, um, is pretty much a, a given at this point. Um, so we've gone from our own estimates to using what the state is, is offering. Um, and I believe we all feel comfortable with, um, the amount of local receipts that we are projecting.
Thank you, Andrea. Uh, we do have a question from Councilor Bacon.
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you for the comparisons and also, um, through you to the Chair of Finance, ask if I can be on the link for the links to the calculations for the budget going forward, even though I'm not on the committee, that would be great.
Okay, and, um,
Um, I, I, so Andrea, Councilor Bacon, I lost the, the second part.
Oh, um, I was just hoping I could get looped in for the links, um, to the different calculations that will be available to the finance committee.
Okay, this is not the finance committee though. I, that's the part I didn't get. This is the full city council. I'm just, uh,
No, 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 I understand that, but she's going to provide to the committee those additional links for the further calculations?
Right, I can, I can send the link from the Divisional Local Services.
Yes.
It's something that, um, is available to, um, to the public to use. And, um, they've done a great job actually with, with updating it. So, um, all you need to do is select, um, your community. So you'll select, um, Holyoke from the dropdown and they've done a great job populating all of the fiscal 22, um, tax recap information. So, um, it's something that people can kind of look at on their own and certainly something that we will, um, we will, um, publish at different levels, um, should the, uh, finance committee or the, uh, city council in general, um, like us to, to provide those numbers for you.
Oh, okay. I was just understanding at first that there was going to be something sent to the committee separately from the council, so.
No, but a good point.
Thank you.
Good point, Councilor Bacon. And right now I will, through our administrative assistant, make sure the, all the links and, and any information certainly will be available to the entire city council, uh, not just, uh, when the finance committee is meeting. Now I understand, thank you.
Uh, Councilor McGivney.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so the workbook, workbook is self-contained, so should, um, should the various committees or the, where the council wish to, um, distribute that, it's something that can be done, um, without sort of breaking, breaking any of the formulas.
Thank you. Councilor Israel Rivera.
Just a question for Andrea with regards to that link. Is, is the link, uh, a, a, a website that you could just give me the website and I could just do it myself?
Yes, absolutely. Um, the, um, we do a lot of reporting as well as our tax recap, um, process with the Division of Local Services, which is our division that we, we work with, um, as a local government. It's a branch of the Department of Revenue. Um, so I'd be glad to, um, even, um, I can embed that link, um, somewhere into this workbook and I'd be happy to send the link, um, to, um, the mayor and so that he can distribute that, um, to everyone. Um, but yes, it's, it's, the Division of Local Services has a number of data bank areas, great statistics, and they, they have years and years of historical information, not only for Holyoke, but all the other 351, um, communities and, and taxing authorities in the state. So, um, the nice thing is that you can go onto that site and get a lot of historical information. And if you wanted to do some, um, um, comparisons to similar communities, um, rather than have you need to, um, maintain years and years of historical data within, um, this budget view.
So lastly, just for clarification, anybody can go onto the Division of Local Services website, type in Holyoke and find a bunch of different, um, uh, different, uh, tools that can help you forecast, project and look at the budget and all that extra stuff.
Um, right, so their information is somewhat dated. Again, you know, they, they, they've done a great job with this, um, tax, sort of tax bill estimator, if you will, by putting in the fiscal 22 information, um, for everyone, which is great. Um, otherwise, you know, their information, great information out there, it's, it's often, um, you know, probably six months to 12 months, um, in arrears, but it's, it's great for building historical, um, information, looking at, at trends for your community and also in comparison to, to other communities out there.
Thank you, Andrea.
Sure.
Andrea, that was just, uh, Councilor Rivera showing off and us dinosaurs need an IT specialist with us all at all times during these meetings, but that's okay. You know, we get used to it. Andrea, thank you. The, uh, the information and the format and what you presented to us is very helpful. I know, I know you've worked with the auditor, I know you worked with Mayor Garcia and that was much appreciated. Are there any other questions at this point in time on revenue projections or anything that's been presented to the council so far this evening? Mayor, any other general, um, comments you wish to make before we go to your budget on page two?
All good, Councilor.
Thank you, Mayor. And to our auditor, are we ready to go forward? Thank you. Um, what we, what we typically do now is we're doing, you know, for the next few budget meetings, a line item review. And again, as I stated at the opening of the meeting, we could, but we're going to hopefully reserve motions to cut until the, uh, to the final budget hearing, which will be set by our president. And, uh, well in advance, we'll know when that, what that date is. Uh, it'll be obviously before the 45-day period is up. I neglected when I opened the meeting to remind everybody, we are Zoom, we are hybrid tonight on Zoom. We are being telecast live on, on the access channel, we are being streamed, we are being recorded, and there is a tornado warning out there. So if we go blank all of a sudden, don't blame City Hall, it's, uh, the weatherman that's going to do it to us. But hopefully the, uh, tornado or the bad storms will stay away from the city of Holyoke. Andrea, I don't know if you've ever seen a city like, uh, like Holyoke, Massachusetts, but, uh, we like to think of ourselves as being unique. And I know we're in a unique positions when it comes to the budget, but thank you for your, your outside analysis and it's going to be, I, I anticipate very helpful with our analysis of our finances for this upcoming fiscal year. Mayor on page two.
It's our pleasure. Thank you so much for the opportunity to work with Holyoke. And best of luck, everyone, with your, with your budgeting.
Thank you. Thank you, you're welcome. Thank you, appreciate it. Uh, if everybody could turn to page two, when I say pages, I'm referring to the budget book itself. Uh, if we can do it that way, if you need any help, if you're using a different format, we'll get it. This is the office of the mayor, uh, Mayor Garcia. Can we start off with line item number one? Your salary.
That was before me.
Okay.
I can cut that if you want.
No, 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 uh, actually, this is the, it, remind me, is, this is the agreed upon increase that we adopted two years ago? Tanya, is that the mayor's salary?
It was last year, actually.
Last year, okay. Okay, so it's in line with the, uh, with the ordinance. Uh, all elected officials' salaries are, are governed by ordinance at the moment.
That's, and that's really the, the, the biggest increase, I think, in this budget, personal versus expenses. When you look at the total departmental expenditure, that increase is largely because of the change in the ordinance on the mayor's salary.
Understood. Uh, do you feel for your department, for your office, that this is a fair budget that will get you to continue to provide the services that your office does for the rest of the year?
I do, so you'll notice in contracted services, for example, it's nothing, it's blank, zero. But again, you'll, you'll notice, um, in your next full council meeting, uh, transfer requests of free cash, um, so that we cab the flexibility to navigate, uh, exploration of, uh, the feasibility of improving services and whatnot. So that, tho- those are, that's the tool I'm going to need to, uh, continue. But everything else is, I mean, the education and training, um, there's the, uh, we factored in there, the costs for the, uh, the Math Municipal Association training, um, the, the dues and subscriptions, that's the, that's been there before me. And I looked at into where each of those dollars go, um, for the dues and subscriptions. So that's legitimate, it's very real. Um, I, I've completely eliminated, uh, uh, public digni- dignitary receptions. Uh, I don't see there's anything necessary there. And then I also put for the executive assistant, um, uh, the number you see there brings it up to the mid-level. Um, uh, she's been here long, been a lot of us and thought that'd be great, but certainly an opportunity to look at for, you know, if you guys feel strongly about her or not. But yeah, this is, um, this is it.
Any questions for the mayor on page two? Seeing none while the mayor is with us, uh, can we go to page 47 of the budget book? Page 47 is a, a general catch-all, but mostly about insurance, insurance claims, benefits, a lot of things to travel, transfers and other items. Uh, some of the line items on this page are known as budget busters. And I think we all know when it comes to health insurance, the most, one of the most important, uh, benefits that we provide to city employees can be very expensive. We do have a Section 19 committee that works closely, but it's the mayor of the city of Holyoke, uh, with the help of the Section 19, with the help of the auditor personnel and other department heads who are responsible for, uh, both projecting and for carrying out health insurance. Uh, Mayor Garcia, is there anything on, uh, health insurance that you'd like to talk about just in general?
Well, I've learned more about health insurance than what I ever want to, uh, know and understand. And even so, even so, it's still, uh, a complicated environment to navigate in. But, um, we were looking at a, originally a 7% increase and then a, a 5% increase. Um, and, uh, myself and, and our, um, personnel director and, um, looked into, worked with our insurance folks and found areas of which we can into, worked with our insurance folks and found areas of which we can pivot that brought it um, uh, brought the increase lower than the five percent. Um, but that's, as you can see, the health insurance, retirement, well, insurance in general, retirement, and um, and then there's the schools, those were the uncontrollable areas. Um, but going into twenty-four, however, we are exploring um and I, the opportunity to transition out from our current network. And whether if it's Maya or the GIC, uh, uh, we think that there might be some opportunities there um to bring in some uh savings uh into four twenty-four. So currently, we've just, we did the, the best we can to navigate the impact um in these increases. And hopefully, there will be um, uh, some potential in, in, in the next fiscal year in twenty-four, if, you know, if we make these changes.
Mayor, on, on unemployment, um, we are self-insured on unemployment. And two or three years ago, um, to the auditor, I think the school department absorbed their, which is very helpful, you know, to control, absorbed the, their layoffs. And uh, were teachers that don't get their certification after, um, given a, a probationary period of two to three years to achieve it, sometimes less, are laid off. And unfortunately, or maybe not for them, unfortunately for the city can collect on insurance. But that has remained over the last couple of years in the school budget and absorbed by the schools. And I think it gives better control to the auditor. Is that the same, gonna be the same for this fiscal year coming?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I think that's important to understand because that can be a, a mini budget buster if uh there's a lot of layoffs over the summer. Um, is there any other questions on page forty-seven? Insurance, claims, damages, things that, you know, especially the insurance parts that come under the mayor. We've been joined by Counselor Jordan. Kevin, welcome.
Thank you. Good to be with you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Always a pleasure to see you.
I, I did have one, not a question on forty-seven, but was there any discussion of the uh page forty-six?
No, actually, we can do that right now if we're done with forty-seven, which I think we are. Can we turn to page forty-six, which is uh long-term debt, uh, short-term debt? Uh, is, this also continue, more, more in line, I think, with the treasurer, the auditor, but the mayor, the entire budget is the mayor's. So, but Counselor Jordan, go ahead on page forty-six.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel McGivern, uh, one question I did have is relative to uh interest on short-term debt. I wanted to see if we were gonna have any uh short-term debt uh issuance. I see that there's seventy-five thousand dollars allocated for this purpose. Uh, that's obviously something the city council's always kept a, a close eye on because as a general rule, uh, we don't wanna have too much short-term borrowing. Not generally something we encourage unless there's special circumstances. Is this a placeholder amount? Or is there something anticipated over the next uh fiscal year for uh short-term debt?
To the auditor.
Um, sorry about that. So right now, we do, we do have a few bans out for some of the school accelerated um projects with their boilers and windows. So we will be paying for that. And also, we are going to be banning quite a bit for their roof replacement. So the way that it works with them is we do bond along the way, but we don't wanna bond too much because we're always looking to get that MSBA reimbursement in. But you still have to carry the debt until the MSBA makes their final payment, if that makes sense. We do also have some other projects outstanding, like infrastructure, speed bumps, um, and a couple of other things that, that are fairly recent. The roof on the merry-go-round, I believe, in the, in the veterans. So there are a couple of things that we're working on out there that we will ban throughout the year. So that is a placeholder, but, but I think it's a good one.
Um, it, now, some of the smaller ticket items, uh, is there a reason we can't expense those as opposed to, obviously, the boilers and some of the thing that we're getting SBA on. I'm totally with you on those. But you mentioned some other items here. I think you mentioned, did I hear you correctly, speed humps and perhaps a roof? Uh, uh, there's a roof replacement for the merry-go-round is, do, do we have price tags for those items?
Do we have what?
Price tags. Do you have an estimate?
Yeah, they had estimates that were submitted when we actually put the bond in front of the um council. I could probably dig them up for you if you like.
I, I think the merry-go-round is, not the merry-go-round, but the exhibit hall?
Oh, the exhibit hall, you're right.
Yeah. The merry-go-round would welcome the city paying for the roof. And, and I know one of our, our tax collectors on the board of the merry-go-round, we, we would welcome the city to pay for the roof.
I felt like.
But I don't think that's gonna happen.
Didn't they do some patching or something for the, I'm not, I, I know they did one, must be the exhibit hall.
It's, the exhibit hall did, did the uh, the HVAC system, I believe, and some roof patching. And War Memorial has been doing some work on the roof, too. I don't know.
Yeah, there's a few buildings, I know, yep.
Okay, so are, what you're saying is that the council, it didn't happen this year because I haven't seen those items since I started January. But you're saying last year, the council bonded for the exhibit hall and for some speed humps?
They authorized the debt, yes. It's not bonded yet. That's why we'll have short-term notes.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, maybe, uh, if you could send me those offline, I'd like to just see what comprises the seventy-five thousand.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any other questions at this point on page forty-six? Thank you. And Ma- and Mayor, the entire budget is yours. Uh, but we will go for this evening and, and future budget hearings, uh, department by department. So, and we, we thank you for not just being here this evening, but for your tremendous uh attendance at so many of our meetings and uh participating in them. It's much welcomed. And going by the agenda set by the president, not by myself, next in line is our city treasurer. And we welcome Katie Jakowski. Katie's with us uh via Zoom. Uh, Madam Treasurer, would you like to make some opening comments about your budget, which is on?
Page six.
Page six.
Sure. Thank you. Um, I don't have too many comments. I mean, it's pretty on par. Obviously, personal services are only going up by uh whatever contracts are in place. And mine is obviously by ordinance, as we just said with the mayor. Um, and the only real issue that I see I might have um is in expenses. Um, postage, I've already spent twenty-five thousand this year, and I expect that to increase because, you know, stamps only go up. And we keep mailing more and more things. Um, but we'll make it work if I need to.
Buy some of those forever stamps before they go up again.
I'm not lying.
Any questions by, um, by the city council for our city treasurer? Uh, we're on page, again, page six. To what, to the treasurer, the, your um salary is the ordinance that was set the year, the year before, year and a half ago, the projected salary here?
Yep.
And your assistant treasurer is union, correct?
No, um. Sorry, did Tanya say something?
No, no.
No, it's, that's by ordinance as well, I believe. She's not in a union.
Okay, thank you. Everybody good?
Um, Joe, I, I had just one sort of revenue question for the treasurer. I don't, I don't know if.
Go right ahead, Kevin. Counselor Jordan.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Um, again, don't need to answer because it might be a bit of a prepared response. But um, I did wanna see, and I don't know if you guys addressed this before I got here, I, again, apologize, I had a prior commitment. Um, but in terms of uh liens, status of liens that are currently um out there, I would like to see a list of all current liens that the city holds for tax arrears. As you know, your office is in charge of tax collection, uh, with the tax collector, especially once it, it's already placed, um, and managing that. Um, I also wanted to see um what's out there, what's potentially out there. And also, what are your projections for um tax collection arrears that you think we might be eligible for this year? Um, again, uh, you don't have to answer off the top of your head unless you know off the top of your head. But that would be a nice thing if you could, uh, when you have a, a moment to think that through, to, to send that, um, maybe over the next week. Uh, that would be appreciated.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Any other questions for our treasurer? Seeing none. The uh next item on the agenda is the assessor's office on page five. With us, we have our chief assessor, Deborah Brunel. Deborah, welcome. Uh, well-known to this process and uh certainly well-known to the uh, to the city council. We appreciate you coming and all you do. Again, um, as for each department, would you like to make any opening comments on, on your budget?
Um, yes. Um, the one large increase you see under professional assessment services, that is for contracted services from our vendor to not only help me out being the only assessor trying to keep everything under control, but that is to cover a lot of our cyclical inspections that are part of our revaluation plan that the state issues that were due for twenty-twenty-five. We have to have those done by twenty-twenty-four. Otherwise, we will not get certification in twenty-twenty-five. So cutting those funds or lowering them will not allow us to proceed and get that done. In the past, we've had it cut from year to year to year when we've requested it. And we really can't afford to have that done at this time. Um, anything else?
If, um, Deborah, the, I, I know, and it's the city council's responsibility to uh, to uh fill the replacement for uh, for Tony Do, well, it's actually your former position.
Yes.
After Tony Doolittle left the, uh, the chief assessor's position. And you do have, do you have a third party at the moment, but not, not paid, that, that votes on the board with you?
Yeah, she's just a, she's a board member. She receives a stipend of five hundred dollars a year.
Okay.
And Tony's unpaid is the other board member. The board members don't do any of the day-to-day work, though. They just vote on the issues.
Understood. I, I just wanna make it clear in case some people um don't, don't see it. And then we went to the, the third person, we'll, we'll say by the encouragement of the state and the Department of Local Services.
Yes.
Um, and at the same time, we recognize that you and Tony have done a tremendous amount of work over the, over the years. Um, are there any questions for the assessor, chief assessor?
Yeah, Joe?
Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Deb, for coming in. So could you um just briefly explain the um, the office now? Do you have one assessor and you wait, you, you're one assessor and you're waiting on one?
Yes, we'd like to hire another one, preferably someone with experience, so that there's very little training to do. If we were to hire somebody that didn't have any experience and would need to receive the training, the education and training budget was cut to a hundred dollars, we would not be able to offer any training to get them certified.
Right. I, I believe there's a couple in the works, uh, applications. I think they're trying to work that out through the personnel department.
Yes.
For us to interview on, on.
And we're trying to advertise on, we're on the M Mass Municipal Association and the M A A O, trying to find someone more qualified.
Okay, so what, what position is that? Is that, it would be the assistant assessor?
No, the assistant assessor is not an assessor at all. They're an administrative assistant.
Oh, so it's an administrative?
Yeah, they're, they're not an assessor. They're an assistant to the assessor.
Okay, so you do have a person in that position right?
Yes, we have a person in that position.
Okay, so which of those, one is the open, the uh assessor?
Yes, the assessor's the vacant position, yes.
Okay, and that's the one that's the sixty-three thousand?
Yes.
So if somebody did come in and we appointed somebody, say, within June or July, if we have interviews, um, that salary may not be the set, salary set. You would have a range? It'd be only be a little bit lower than that? Or would that be the salary?
Yeah, that, discussing that with the mayor, that was the range we set out to hire someone out. It could be lower, could be higher based on experience.
I, I think that's the mid-max.
That's the max.
If I'm mistaken, the mid-max. Any new employee through ordinance, right, that's not in a union, this isn't a union position, right?
Not a union.
Can't make more than the mid-max. So it'll be from the low to the mid-max. But I think we, we budgeted there, depending on experiences, no more than the mid-max.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you for your answers.
Any further questions for our assessor?
I have.
Go ahead, go ahead, Tessa.
I have like a newbie question.
Counselor Murphy Ramblety.
Um, when, for example, you mentioned that you advertised on, on uh Mass Municipal, does that come from your budget? Or does that come from?
No, that's.
Personnel?
Personnel.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't know if they charge them or not. I don't know.
Got it.
How that works there.
Okay, thank you.
And that, um, our public service committee works with the uh, with the personnel director on that. And, you know, with our chief administrative assistant, uh, it's, I, I, I don't think it's so much the salary. I think it's just indicative of the times. If you, if I remember correctly, across the state, they're having problems with some of these types of positions and filling them.
There's little over forty vacant assessors, assessor positions across the state.
That, that's, that just says it all.
Yeah.
It's, you know, Mayor?
I was just gonna, remind me again, Debbie, um, if the one person wants to start and they need training, you'll need two thousand in training for that one person?
No, I would need about fifteen hundred for them. But I need to constantly renew my education. I have to get at about fifteen credits a year.
That's my question.
And that's, a hundred dollars isn't.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
So, and, and considering the, the practice that the council has, which is, which is creative, um, you know, I can do one of two things. Certainly, there's flexibility to offer a supplemental or when the time comes, um, uh, support a line item transfer from somewhere to, 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 but this is, again, it's all about how, what strategy you wanna pursue to be sure that we're um keeping up with the need when it comes up. Uh, we can add it into budget or we could do a line item transfer later, whichever you prefer.
I um, I appreciate that, Mayor. I, and I appreciate the uh, the adjective creative, if that's what I just heard. We'll, we'll talk about that some other evening, okay? Uh, first, Counselor Jordan, and then Counselor Murphy Ramblety.
What? I got skipped?
Well, yeah, let, uh, let Counsel Rivera go first.
Counselor Izzy Rivera, will you?
Seniority rules.
I'm down. You're, you're sitting next to the mayor. I'm not staring at you, but what, can I explain something? I'm kidding around. Um, and Todd is gonna do it the way Todd's gonna do it. Hybrid's very tough when you're running a meeting. You gotta keep an eye on two things. If you wanna speak and you read, when I'm, when I'm here, just please raise your hand. I'll look at you. When I nod, I've got you. If I don't nod at you, I missed your hand.
Nah, I just thought you knew. I graciously let Tessa go first.
I, I, no, and, and you'll be honest with you, my right eye is my weak eye, so I'm just not catching this side of the room. Go ahead.
Is, uh, my question was around the training piece. That's all it was. It was like the two thousand dollars. There, there is a reason for the ask. And then the other piece to me is like, cause I'm looking in the past, um, it was seven fifty. Um, regularly, do you guys attend trainings to help you?
Yes.
Keep up to date?
We do.
What is being changed on a regular basis?
Yes, we have to.
Josh kinda answered the hundred dollar piece after that. So my question's done now.
Okay.
Thank you.
See, I knew that.
Yeah, I know, I know you knew that. That's why. I thought it was a talk.
Counselor Jane, and then Counselor Murphy Ramblety.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you again. Um, uh, the first thing I wanna talk to you about, um, Dev, is the overlay account. Uh, I don't know if you had an opportunity to discuss that at all this evening. Um, but I wanted to talk about, the mayor has um suggested that there should be a half a million dollars in the overlay. So um, I wanted to just see what that's predicated on. Um, so.
So, what, why that number as opposed to any other number? And do we have any major, I want to understand sort of the city's risk, potential abatements that might be sitting out there? Can you just kind of give me insight into your thinking on the half a million number?
Yep, the half a million-
Can I interject real quick? And that's a good question, my Counselor Jordan. But Deb, can you, for our audience and for new City Councilors, give us the definition of what the overlay account is and how you use it?
The overlay account is money we have to cover things like exemptions, veterans, seniors, widows. All that exemption, money we get from the overlay covers those exemptions. Those are about $300,000 a year. So, that leaves us about $200,000 to work with to cover billing errors, people contesting their value being wrong, and us having to refund money to them. It covers that. That's what that is for. And usually, we budget for $500,000 every year. Sometimes, we don't use it all and it accumulates. And sometimes, we do use it all. It's very rarely we use it all, though, because things are usually okay. We do have a couple of ATB cases, appellate tax board cases, pending against us. So, my overlay is a little high right now, and I don't remember what the figure is that I've calculated on. I know we have two substantial cases, and one was with Verizon New England that we just settled on with the state, and we're waiting to hear where that goes until August. But that could be a potential liability for us, too. So, once those cases are settled, if there's money still left in the overlay that's extra and can possibly go somewhere else.
Thank you, and now Counselor Jordan's question.
Yeah. By the way, Deb, what is the current balance in the overlay, if you know?
Off the top of my head, it's seven or 800,000. Maybe Tanya knows. Do you know, Tanya?
I know, I'm sorry, I don't know that offhand. I thought it was a little bit higher than that, but you probably track it better than I do.
Yeah.
I do the allowances and then I process them, so.
Yeah.
Okay, and you guys are welcome to get back to me with any follow-up. That's fine.
I can get back to you on that.
Yeah, that's no problem. If, okay, so you mentioned the exemptions, obviously, no issues there. By the way, did you end up with some of the advertising? Did you make out better with the 41(c)(ex) exemptions this year?
No.
Would some more applica-
What you voted on starts for July 1st. It starts for fiscal 2023.
No, I understand, but did you get, I believe the applications were due by April 1st, so did you get more applications than prior year?
This year, we did have more applications than before. And we anticipate more for '23 since the values lower.
Perhaps our advertising is working. So, maybe you could follow up, because I think last year, we only had 48. And this year, we hopefully will have more than 48, considering we're allowed to give out 250. So, yes, the 300, no issue there. So, I just, I guess I want to understand, we want to add an extra 200,000 once we learn what the total balance in the account is, then the council will be able to make a determination whether or not that's a good idea. And so, let's think about the, so that would leave, let's just say, if you're correct about the 800,000 number, if we added 200,000 to that, that would put about a million in the overlay. So, I want to understand what the city's exposure is. Can you give me, you know, what you're likely to give out in abatements, doing the routine stuff? And then, tell us a little bit more about these figured cases, if you could. At least, like, what type of money is at play and what the heart of the issue is?
I will be happy to send you the report tomorrow. I've already sent it to the city auditor as requested, so I do have that in a PDF format, and I can just email that to you tomorrow.
Okay, okay, right.
I'd rather not discuss and name cases or anything and talk about them and their liability, but in the PDF, you will have all that information.
Right, I'm not looking for you to argue the positions. I'm just trying to understand, like, what are they saying? You know, we obviously, like, for example, Springfield had a big issue regarding the polls.
They did, they did. And we have one still. And then, there is the one that I just did mention with the Verizon New England that was a statewide case because of the Commissioner of Revenue assigns those values. And it's for every community in the state. We had to sign on to that. So, if that passes, we'll be all set, and we won't have to worry about a liability like that occurring. But we won't know that till they settle that, probably in August. But every year, we rely on that 500 to cover everything. So, I do need more than 200 to be given to me for the overlay. I do need the 500.
No, I understand that. Well, we have to give you 300, right, just to cover your normal exemptions.
Right, and those, I figured, were higher this year, too, because of the senior exemption going up.
Right, well, we'll want to know how much that is. Of course, we only have to pay 250 of it. The state pays the first 500 of it.
Right.
Right. So, I guess we want to know how much more, you know, I want to understand if we're gonna add $200,000 and put the account at around a million or whatever this number is. I just want to make sure that we're comparing the exposure to the amount of money that's in the account. You know, I don't want to tie up a million dollars if there's not a million dollars' worth of exposure to the city, potentially. That's, I mean, we could use those dollars potentially for other purposes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Right? All right, so I'll review that and try and understand, and you'll outline what the potential exposure is and then what the likely outcomes are.
Yes.
All right, great. So, that covers the overlay question. The other thing is, I wanted to see if you happen to have had a chance to follow up on our last discussion about looking in potentially to a consultant to help you with the mall situation, if you've been able to get any estimates around that. Because I, for one, think your request of 30,000, obviously, you got revow in here, but I'm not, I don't think that's enough. I think we would probably need to give you more money. And the question is, I want to evaluate where they're at currently. If the 122 million assessment they're now at, I believe, is that accurate? I would like that to be evaluated. And I would like to make sure we're prepared to respond to any future increases, because they seem to be coming at this annually. So, I want to see what type of cost we might be looking for. I know I had had a conversation both with you and the mayor, and I think the game plan was to get you some more resources. So, do you still need more time, probably, I'm assuming, to look into that? Or do you have a ballpark?
I will need quite a bit of time to get that done. I have talked to my rep from the state. The mayor has talked to, had a meeting with our representative from the state as well, our advisor, and have gone over things as well as to what would be best for us and the best course of action. So, we are talking with him and a local valuation company to see what can be done. I think Josh wants to-
Mayor Garcia?
Yeah, that, so I, so there are two things. There is the, I'm not an expert in the assessing world, but there's the strategy of where, what's the word? It's not evaluation, but the-
Appraisal.
The appraisal. But then, there's a strategy you guys undergo where you and the mall and you're looking at the revenues and the expenses, and you come up with a consensus or some sort of a dollar amount agreement, which the state, the reps at least, from the Commonwealth, felt very comfortable with that process and felt that the office was much closer than ever before with how they're evaluating it now. What I do, in that free cash proposal that I, that you're, that's gonna come in front of you at your next meeting, hopefully, that 200x dollar amount for municipal finance support, that's tied up in there. We don't know how much it's gonna cost. We would solicit proposals from qualified vendors that can help review that strategy and offer an opinion or a recommendation as to whether or not we're on target with the assessment. So, once we know what that dollar amount is for that consultant, it'll, you know, I'm gonna work it like a puzzle in that dollar amount that's in that free cash request for municipal finance support.
Great, thank you. Look forward to reading that. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you all. We've also been joined by Counselor Madonado Velez. Welcome. Any other questions? We are on, still on page five for the Assessor. Seeing and hearing none, we now move on to page three, our Auditor's Budget.
Can I make one quick comment?
Sure.
I just wanted to go back to Andrea, talking about the DLS website and the budgeting tools you can use there for assessment and the tax recap. A lot of that, that was new last year. I provided a lot of that data to you in those packets I give you every year. It's a wonderful tool. If there's anything else you're looking for, I can get that information for you if you can't find it on your own. But it is really helpful. So, if you need help with it, let me know. And I will be including that in my information again for you this year.
Well, we appreciate that, and this dinosaur will be calling you.
Okay.
Thank you, Deborah. And do you feel confident your budget at this moment will support what your office has to do?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. So, on to the auditor, page three. Tanya, welcome.
Thank you.
Would you have any opening comments?
I do, I'd like to go through my budget for you. So, the largest increase that you're going to see in my budget has to do with actually my salary and the salary of the professional accountant that I hired last year. By looking at the salary schedules, my salary was actually the minimum salary, and I've been here for three years, so I did put in for a little increase for myself. The professional accountant, I hired at $60,000, but I'm going to tell you, she's a blessing. She's very much overqualified. She processes tons of work. She's a fast learner, and I'm going to teach her how to be your next auditor, because I'm pretty sure that everybody knows that, you know, succession really is success for you. And I know that in the past, you've been without an auditor, and I don't think that was appropriate for you or the constituents of the city. My other two positions are actually union. They're in the NAG union, which is the clerical union. So, those are, those are actually budgeted at no increase since the NAG union contract has not been ratified yet and negotiated. Other than that, when you go down to my expense line items, my other expense line items, professional accounting and auditing is obviously what Melanson Heath does for us. $81,000 is contractually obligated. I haven't signed it yet for this fiscal year, obviously, but $81,000 was their estimate for us. And then, Siegel, who does our GAZBian, our actuarial consulting, is budgeted at $18,500, which I actually received from Siegel. Other than that, there's, you know, there's minor increases. The mayor did cut some of my budget lines, and I'm not, I don't feel terrible about it. I'm sad, but I can definitely make it through. But everyone, everything else is pretty minimal. So, if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Seeing the mayor appropriately agreed with the first line item in your budget, which I agree with also, I can see why you're only sad with the mayor on any cuts.
I would work here for less.
I think we know that, and we appreciate the work you do, Tanya. Thank you.
I like it here.
Do you feel with the cuts and with this budget that you can provide the services that your office is required to?
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, you've taken, and it looks like you've done a great job of filling the vacant position, you know, especially the key one of the, your assistant, I guess, is the title. But, you know, it took a while, but I think it was worth, it sounds like it was worthwhile with the person you've hired.
Definitely.
Any questions for our auditor, Counselor Jordan?
Yes, Tanya, first of all, thank you for all your hard work. I just find you super responsive and really working very hard, and it's really appreciated. So, I just wanted to, one, say that. Granted, I'm new back on the council, and I haven't been here for much of your three-year tenure, but by all indications, from what I've observed, you, and so far since I have been here, you've done a great job. So, one, thank you for that. Two, I did have a question relative to Melanson and Heath. One of the things, and I've said this for quite some time, so don't feel, you know, because you're new, I'm bringing this up as a new issue. Melanson Heath has been our outside auditor for a really, really, really long time. And as a general, now, they're a very good firm, by the way, let me say that. But as a general rule, don't you feel from an internal control perspective, it's wise to rotate your outside auditors every so many years? It seems to me, you know, when I hear things like, you know, Cinder McInerney, she's great and she's wonderful, and, but, you know, but I've been your consultant on all bond things since 1973 or some insane date like this back in history, or, you know, I know Siegel's been here for a long time. I'm less concerned with them. But Melanson Heath, as the outside auditor, has been our outside auditor for a really long time. What's your thoughts about rotating that out and putting that out to bid and seeking some other fresh set of eyes? It seems to me it would be an important internal control to have a different outside auditor every so many years. Your thoughts?
Well, I actually disagree with that. And your fiscal audit does not have to be, does not even have to go out to bid, to be honest, you know, via 30b. And the reason why I'm going to say that, I'm not going to say it's a bad idea, but what I'm gonna say is this, if you brought in another auditor at this point into this city, in the state that we've been in for so long, they're gonna charge you twice as much money. Because Melanson and Heath helps us out tons. They audit every single one of our departments. They know the difference between what the school does, what the city does. So, if we did everything proper and accurate and we didn't need so much support and assistance, I would say, yeah, sure. But knowing what I know as the auditor and knowing what they know about us as the external auditor, my preference would definitely be to keep them, because they help us through our audit more than I've ever seen an auditor help people ever. And I don't know that we would get that kind of service from somebody else. As a matter of fact, I said if, if they were, if I was my client and I was the auditor, I would probably fire us. We don't get our items in on time. We, I mean, we just, it's, we're working on it. We're working on, you know, getting our audits together, getting our finances together, but we have a long way to go. And to switch it up at this point and say we're getting a new auditor, somebody that assists us so much in everything that we do on a day-to-day basis, an annual basis, they do all of our financial statements, they file our Schedule A, they're familiar with all of our books, they're familiar with our reports. To me, I would not want to do that.
Interesting, interesting answer. Troubling answer, actually, because basically, what we're saying is we're not the normal client, that we're basically somewhat dysfunctional, which is not a surprising answer. But I guess I'll stand by my statement that in the ideal situation, you would rotate these around. That is the standard practice in the corporate sphere, and it certainly would be, you know, perhaps, a city that doesn't need so much handholding. I guess it's something that we work towards.
I have something to say. In a normal, in a normal corporate world, that is not regular practice. I worked in higher education. I worked in the federal government. I worked for 14 years for the same higher education institution. We had the same auditor. I worked for Springfield College. They had the same auditor for the five years that I was there. So to say it's normal practice, I'm not sure where you're coming from, because I've been working in finance for 25 years, and that's not my experience.
Yeah, well, I suppose I could get into a list of other institutions and, and some of the materials I've read on some of these things. But basically, they do say, a number of, after a number of years, you should have a fresh set of eyes looking at things. Because if you have the same auditors reviewing it with the same financial team, they could be covering up for each other, basically is essentially it. And covering gaps, covering bad practices, why, if you have an external team looking at it, bringing in different sets of eyes, it's, it's, it's in the best interest of, of, of the organization, in my opinion. That's been my experience and read on that. That may be, you know, you have a different experience, of course, you know, everybody has different opinions. But basically, I think the best practice is, you don't want to say, I mean, Melanson Heath has probably been our auditor well over 20 years, maybe, maybe 30 years. As, as far back as I can remember, they have been. And it's intriguing to me that you say that they're doing all these other operations. So they're really more than just the outside auditor. They're really more of a handholding exercise, because of apparently some of the dysfunctions you've articulated. All right, well, this is important information. I, I appreciate you sharing your thoughts and your experience, and I'll, I'll, I'll think that over some more. But I think we need to work towards considering how we can have look at other options, and, and where are they giving us support, and where are we getting outside audit services to? So, and, but maybe we're just not there yet. But thank you. I appreciate your thoughts.
Very interesting conversation. I appreciate it myself. And Councilor Jordan, perhaps that same philosophy, maybe philosophy is not the correct way to, to define it, but perhaps that should, you know, same way of thinking should apply to the division of local services.
Yes.
I'm going to get in trouble for saying that, aren't I, Mayor?
By the way, on that note, I believe there is a practice that they rotate the auditors in the state audit office, as well as in some of these other offices, where it's not the same person with the same cities all the time.
You've had some regional people for decades.
Yeah. But, but that's not always the case, I understand, because there's other considerations and factors. But again, we're trying to get to best practice, not to the only practice. Thanks.
To, to the auditor, if there's, I don't see any other hands at the moment. Tanya, do you believe this budget will support at the moment the services you need to provide, the direct services you need to provide through your, your office?
Yes.
And you are the, the auditor for the entire budget, obviously. Are there any shortcomings in the budget as presented? And I know it's, we, we still have up until the time we set the tax rate and a little bit of flexibility here, which is much appreciated. Is there any shortcomings that you'd like to make aware of us without embarrassing your, I shouldn't say embarrassing yourself, but without putting yourself in the, a bad limelight with that guy sitting across the aisle from you?
It's all good. It's all good.
I, I always have a concern over the insurances, the workers' comp, the liability insurance, because those things fluctuate. So, I mean, I'm always concerned for those. But I think that we did a good job budgeting for them, so I feel fine.
Well, that's appreciated. And that was the first page we went, the second page we went to with the mayor, as you know. And that is a, not only budget busters, but sometimes moving targets as quick as we're sitting here. And the Section 19, I think, does a, a tremendous job. And, and it's, hasn't always been, there hasn't always been a Section 19 committee. And the, you know, the representatives of the unions and so forth, you know, I think worked diligently with the mayor, with the personnel office and your office to try to keep it under control and still give our employees the best options we can. Any problems with unemployment? I think the biggest problem with unemployment has always been the schools, but is there anything forecasting? There's no unusual layoffs or monies that we're going to have because we are self-insured?
Not to my knowledge.
Just wanted to make sure. I, I'm not anticipating or hearing anything. I just, sometimes that hits us a little, little under the, under the radar. Any other questions for the auditor in page three? Councilor McInee? Nope. Sorry, I thought I saw a hand. My, my mistake. If there's no other questions, we thank our auditor. Don't leave yet.
Thanks, Tanya.
Page, but we do welcome our newest finance department head, tax collector, Laura Wilson-Shaw. I will always say Laura Wilson-Shaw. But I'd like to add a name to that, too, because Laura is the granddaughter of a longtime tax collector in the city of Hoyoke, Mr. William Burns. And I, I think the tradition of keeping a tax collector in the family is something that only Hoyoke could do and, and made a very wise choice. But Laura, welcome. And opening comments, if you'd like, on page seven.
Well, thank you for that introduction, Councilor McGivern. This is my first go-around with budgets and presenting with, presenting it with the city council. I believe we are pretty much similar to other departments in that, you know, with the union contracts, that's how we have set the, the amounts for the head clerk and the, the senior deputy tax collector. And myself, I did bump that up a little bit to be a little more in line with other department heads that are classified at the same grade, and it's still a little lower than all the other department heads. But I'm new. So other than that, there were a few cuts, but I think it's, it's something that we can work with in, in my office.
Do we have any questions for our tax collector?
No, great.
Not yet.
I get that question every day.
Joe?
Councilor Tomlin?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Laura, for coming in and welcome, welcome to the city. Welcome to the, the work of doing the city business. Is your department fully staffed right now?
We are not.
Who are you short?
We are, right now, we have a posting out for the head clerk. Our longtime head clerk in the tax collector's office was promoted to the senior deputy tax collector after Deb Haslam retired after 50 years. It has been an extremely busy time for myself and for Uritza, putting in a lot of long hours, trying to get through excise tax season, and then rolling right into the fourth quarter of real estate taxes. But we are getting through and really, really hoping to have another person join our team, hopefully by the beginning of June.
Okay, so this, so, so this year, you'll be, hopefully, that you'll have a month within this year, and then the following year, you'll have money in the depart, I mean, is there money in the budget right now for that position?
Yes, because Deb Haslam's, they were, we had budgeted for her position, which she was paid at a higher, at a higher rate. And then for so long, Uritza was, was in her position, and we did, and we lost Deb in February. So there, yeah, there's, there's money to cover that.
Okay, so the head clerk, so the person we'll be hiring will be the head clerk?
Yes.
Okay, and at that salary that's listed here?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
That's a good question, Councilor Tomlin. And just, just a reminder to, to our audience, and I know councilors, that the city budget is 12 months. And when you line item a salary or line item an expense that's known for the 12 months, you have to fully fund that line item by state law. Either are flex, some, some things you can work with if you know there's going to be a vacancy, but that's where we often end up with transfers during, during the year when there are vacancies in these positions. But when we begin and not know, and if that position could be filled by July 1, we need to fully fund each of these line items. Questions, Councilor Jordan?
Yes, Laura, thank you for being here. My question surrounds tax collection rate. Are you, what is our current tax collection rate? And do you see any large taxpayers that, or exposure to the city for non-collection, in your opinion?
The, the current residential rate is of 19.26. We...
Not the rate.
Oh.
What I'm referring, what I'm referring to is, what percentage of 100% are we actually collecting of the property tax? And I suppose for that amount of the excise tax. And I'm interested to see if you see any potential risks of people being really behind. I don't know if you've been asked for in recent history of, you know, people who are kind of more than a year behind. Have you been asked to produce that kind of a list?
I have not been asked to produce that kind of a list. I know that because of COVID, there was quite a lapse in doing tax takings. It's something that Katie Jakowski and myself are, are planning to get together to work on that, as it would generate a large amount of revenue for the city. In terms of, you know, the percentage of, of people making their payments, I, I don't know that offhand. I'm sure I could get you some figures representing that. I do know that, this is my first go-around with sending out demands with, with excise bills. It's, it's been a, a doozy of a week or so. And I have found that there's no real consistency, or hasn't really been consistency, in terms of when we are sending out demands and warrants. They are just kind of going out piecemeal. So I am trying to put us on track, so that is something that taxpayers can expect to see if they don't, you know, pay their taxes on time, as there's really no repercussion if you don't pay your, certainly your excise tax on time. It's, you know, pennies that, that you're paying for being a month, a month and a half late, which in my eyes is kind of crazy. I don't know any bill that you can pay that late without any kind of penalty. That being said, we have a lot of taxpayers right now that are extremely unhappy with, with those kind of demands going out. Lots of complaints about the mail and not receiving them, and, you know, people not expecting to still be held accountable for paying these bills, even though they haven't received them. But I, it's really a priority for me to, to put the city on a track where, you know, you can expect to receive this $15 demand 30 days after that bill goes out if you don't pay it. So hopefully, we, you know, are encouraging people to pay these bills on time. So, but in terms of a percentage, I, I don't know that offhand, Councilor.
Okay, all right. No problem. I'll follow, perhaps by an email with you, and we can take it offline. I did want to ask you about your office in terms of, when, when you took over, were you, did you have an opportunity, or was it brought ever to your knowledge about prior inspector general reports relative to the tax collector and treasurer's offices? Have you ever had an opportunity to review those documents?
I have not. This is, from, from when I started, there, there was about a month and a half of, of, you know, help from, from Deb Haslam before she left. So it's, it's been, you know, hitting the ground, running, and, and really trying to immerse myself in just the day-to-day to get that under control, as I didn't have anyone to handle those tasks. So, no, I have not.
Okay. And one of the things I wanted to ask you about is relative to the motor vehicle excise revenue. You have an account, there's one account that is used for that purpose, and, and is that reconciled on a, on a regular basis? Can you just tell me about how auto excise tax is handled in your office?
Full disclosure, none of the accounts have been reconciled since I have been there. We are in, we just had a meeting with members from DLS who are going to come in and set, like, some policies and procedures to assist with that. There has been a large lack of training for, for my office. And while I believe I'm fully qualified, it is something, you know, a very different kind of job from anything else, I believe. So, yeah.
Okay. Just, just giving you a heads up that we've had, certainly nothing on your tenure that I'm aware of, but in the past, in my prior incarnation on the council, we, we had a material weakness, if you will, and that's as euphemistic as I can put it, in that office relative to the auto excise account. So I'll be interested to see, you know, how, how that is all handled, and, and keeping an eye on that one. So anyways, again, thank you, welcome. It's, appreciate your, your hard work on behalf of the city, and I'll, I'll forward along, you know, some questions from time to time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the tax collector? Any questions? I see none online. Just one quick thought from myself. I want to thank you for my demand notice, and I will be paying my extra this week, as I forgot to pay my excise tax bill. And I'm not afraid to say that.
You have 14 days until...
But I did get it in the mail. It was my fault, not the tax collector's office. And I'll take care of that this week. Is there anything else? I, I'm looking at the clock, and there's something wrong here. You know, Councilor McGee, as I stated, is out of state. We have two other councilors who have, one has a family commitment, one's out of state, and that's, but we have 10 city councilors that have participated in the first round of the budget hearings. I thank everyone. Always thank our department heads for your hard work and your participation this evening, because it's, I know it's time above and beyond what you do during your normal work hours, and we appreciate it. And I, I think Mayor Garcia is shooting to break the record of Mayor Dunn back in the 80s and 90s of joining us in the city council chambers. But Councilor McGee's not going to believe this. There's a motion I'd like to hear.
Motion adjourned.
A motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, and the opposed, we stand adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.